You ready? Hey, Ellen. We are ready to start. I know that's believing, that's a little hard to believe sometimes we're a minute or two late because of technical difficulties tonight, we're actually right on schedule. So it's 6:30, I'll call this meeting to order. Don't mind me if we turn certain microphones off, they have adjusted these things to where you can hear and now they overpower each other. So, I will turn it over to Ms. Jennifer to do the invocation.
Would you pray with me, please? Dear my fathers, we gather here today for the McLendon Chisholm City Council meeting. We seek your guidance, your wisdom, and your blessing. We ask for your presence to be with each council member as they make important decisions that impact our community. Grant us the insight to lead with integrity, compassion, and a deep understanding of the needs of our city and its residents. Lord, we ask for your wisdom to prevail in every matter discussed tonight. May your light shine upon us, guiding our thoughts and our actions as we strive to create a brighter future for our city. Bless this meeting with a spirit of cooperation, open communication, to the well-being of our community. It is in your name that we pray, amen.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with infinite justice and all.
Texas flag?
Under Texas's flag, and let allegiance to the E, Texas. One state under God, one indivisible, God bless Texas.
I knew somebody. Alright, folks, as I say in every meeting, the rules of decorum are in effect. We've all heard me say this many, many times. Please, please, please treat each other with respect and treat each other like adults. We're all facing some things that are very heated. We all have our ideas and our versions of how we think things should be done. But I ask you to respect each other's opinions. That's all I ask, be respectful, okay? Alright, next up is going to be a presentation on the photo contest winners. Comrade, I'll turn it over to you.
We have a, um...
You get to use a character. Alright. Hit it. Alright, this still doesn't sound like it's on. Like an ice cream cone, can you hear it? Alright, it's exciting for us as a city to have this, this brand-new photo contest. We invited the whole city to submit photos and, and basically, we, we, um, we're very excited to get everybody involved. One problem that sometimes happens are, are instructions may not have been as concise and clear in year one, but that's a good thing too, because we get better. We learn from it and we get better. We were actually looking for, for, to have four categories of different age groups where we take photographers and the pictures, the photos that they take and, and get two winners in each group. However, what was, what was understood was more of, they wanted pictures of people in different groups and not photographers in this, in all the groups. And luckily, we had, we didn't have a whole slew of photos coming in, even though that's what we had hoped for. And we had a great family that submitted and we decided that they, they should be our winners tonight, so we'd like to invite up the Brogan family. So everybody here with the Brogan family? Come on up, don't be shy. And you must be Mom Brogan, Jaclyn? How's it going? Great. So, um, they submitted a lot of photos, but we chose two of them and we decided to switch it a little bit, so they're going to be our only winners tonight, however, a lot of their photos, which I'm not going to show tonight, which I'm going to give back to you, I'm going to keep the two best. And we're going to, we're going to frame them in a professional frame and we're going to have them in the hallway for a year. So you, anytime somebody wants to come by and see some, some of their two photos, please come by and look at it. The theme of the photo contest was, "Why I love living in the city of McLendon-Chisholm." And so, some of the unique things about it. So let me show you, um, the two winning, and they're smaller, but we'll also try to, like I said, we're going to put them on the, on the, um, framed in the hallway, so please come and see them. So this was a winning photo. And, and I understand from, from Mom that this took like, like two or three minutes to get this photo shot? What a great thing, we can, we can ride horses in the city, we can also ride motorcycles in the city. And this next one's, um, fit into more of the photo picture that we wanted to get, so it's kind of cool that Ashley is on Gator and you can't see it, but there's mud throwing up all over the back of the horse and up her leg and, and they got, and Mom, I guess, caught this on, on a great photo for, and some of the fun things that we can do here in the city of McLendon-Chisholm. So, these are the two photos and we're excited for that. Before I give you, um, the winner, the winners', um, thank you, I'd love you to turn around and, and meet the city council in their shorts and our members and, and let them thank you too. Alright, so here's, here's the, the winning check. It goes, it goes to the family. And, and not, not only do we thank them for being great members of the community, we'll also thank them for taking some time out of their day to participate in this first, now we can call it the first annual since it's over, right? You can call it first annual until we're on to our second. So we hope that you can participate next year and, and grab another envelope and take down your, your, um, your pictures that we're going to have in the hallway. So, thank you so much and thanks to the Brogan family.
Just like me and other folks, we all grew up around livestock, horses, and things like that, and both those bring back a lot of childhood memories. Riding horses bareback through the pasture, either your parents' place or your grandparents' place, friends had dirt bikes, minibikes, and you're chasing a mom horse back and the last bus of you, you might be on the minibike chasing them. Unfortunately, getting into stuff they're not supposed to, um, I remember a few times that I couldn't sit down because I decided to take a horse and about it, it was a river. And God agreed to wait me when I got back because I got that saddle soaking wet. But it brings back memories of, of good times growing up. And thank you guys for, for doing those pictures, it brought back a lot of childhood memories. And I'm very proud to say those are going to be hanging on the wall and there's a reminder of what it's like to be a kid growing up in a town like this. So, thank you all.
Alright, now we're moving on to the next. Feel like you should be facing that way.
My name is John McBride, I just recently bought a parcel of land here in McLendon-Chisholm area at 1520 Bellhaven, which I'm sure many of you know is a master planned community over at High Point Lake Estates. The water provider that's been in there since 2017, when that development was done, was RCH. I was told today that they will not give me access to pot of water. Come to find out, that's a leap. You can't deny somebody access to a utility that you monopolize. So, I've been in contact with multiple people trying to figure out the whole, how far down the rabbit hole you can go with this thing. And I find it real hard to believe that in Rockwall County, one of the two fastest-growing counties in the state of Texas, not just the last year, but for the last decade, nobody saw this coming? And then all of a sudden, we have a new president at the company and a shift. I mean, I'm just, I'm bewildered that even if you look at their own reports, they've been teetering on their max limit for the last eight years. It makes zero sense to me how that kind of negligence can be had by a utility company and what is being done to step in. I know you guys can't do a ton, but I don't think handing it off to a company that's not local is a good, is any good idea for anybody. A company that's for profit turning down their customers because they're holding on to profit is what this essentially boils down to. Anybody got any ideas, because I'm at a loss?
Any questions you have for, more than welcome, to, 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 to,
I believe your pro temp mayor already has my comments and my questions. I, I was, actually, that was one of the rabbit holes I went down yesterday. Led me to your office, that's why I'm here today. Yep.
Thank you, sir. Hi, I'm, goodness gracious, okay, I'm Sherri London at 216 Harvest Ridge Drive, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Today, I'm here to present the results of my research showing that RCH is not meeting minimum standards for both elevated storage and for water supply. Until I compiled the information, I researched, I'd have told you we really only had an issue during the summer, but the facts show it's an issue all year round. I want to make sure the city council is in possession of those same facts for your decision-making. After last July's water outage, I drove to Fort Worth and copied the entire TCEQ compliance file for RCH. Yesterday, I emailed a letter to each of you and attached key documents I used in compiling the information presented in my letter. And the letter presents some simple math. TCEQ records cite Texas law that requires water suppliers to have 200 gallons of elevated storage per connection and .6 gallons per minute of water flow per connection. If you do the math and you don't meet the requirements, you're in violation. Notice that the math has nothing to do with the time of year or how much water you're actually using. So what do the records say? In 2020, RCH had already reached 92% of its maximum tower storage capacity and they were asked to submit a plan to add storage. By 2021, when that plan was submitted, they'd already reached 99% of their maximum storage capacity. And depending on whether they have 2,600 or 2,800 connections, I don't know the number, they have between 4% to 12% less than the bare minimum required storage, because meters kept going out even after our outage. So what about water supply? In 2018, RCH had a buffer of 22% more than the minimum flow required. By 2020, that buffer shrank to 6% and then to 1% by 2021. By 2022, that buffer was completely gone and RCH was then 2% deficient in minimum water supply. But that was last year, and depending on how many connections we actually have today, they're between 7% and 9% less than the minimum flow required per connection. So the lack of tower storage, which contributes to low water pressure, is not a summer issue. The lack of water supply is not a summer issue, though I admit it is worse in the summer. The facts show that RCH is out of compliance 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, and both are simple math, number of connections times required storage or water supply. That means this problem won't be solved by rain, it won't be solved by conservation, it won't be solved by anyone else taking over RCH, it's only going to be solved by adding capacity. I provided these records to Planning and Zoning Chairman Mark Kipit and discussed my concerns. He informed me that city ordinances will require adequate water for new development and that P&amp;Z will make recommendations in accordance with that ordinance. I urge that the city council follow the recommendations of planning and zoning and hold developers accountable to this ordinance. This information was also provided to the Rockwall County Commissioners Court this morning. They have been urged to halt development within RCH's service areas in the unincorporated area of Rockwall County until additional capacity is added. I also provided this information as courtesy to RCH. Seeing as how their prior supplier walked off with records, I wanted to make sure they were in possession of the same information I'm providing to you. I urge the city to work closely with RCH or its successor to track construction of the required infrastructure and to keep Rockwall County informed as well. Thank you.
Folks, if you're here to speak during the public hearing, there is a separate form to sign up for that, just so you're not, you're not talking now and then have to talk again. Just to let you know it's in the back, correct? Or it's over here, it's over here by Ms. Shelley. Alright, next person up. I hope I don't butcher your name, Ron, is it LaRoe? LaRue, I'm sorry. You're up.
Council members, I'm concerned about, I live at 3401 West FM 550 in DePaul and on 550. Not really technically in the city of McLendon-Chisholm, we're in the county, we're not in the ETJ or whatever they call that. But my concern is, you know, several months ago, I mean, I guess I don't know where to go for the info, I met Sherri tonight, so I know there's a website, but, you know, we haven't had a bill in several months. And I guess one of the concerns I want to express is, are they going to lump some, you know, ask me for several thousand dollars for water, not knowing, you know, what that's going to look like? But also, are they going to pull some BS where they tier it and put it all in the high tier and that kind of thing? So I know, as you said, per your rules, you can't answer those questions, but is there anybody here that can provide information?
Did you hear that, Mayor? He said, September and it would be a lumps.
Which is the current company helping RCH, it was Black Land and it was Cash and then somebody else now at Awkward Texas. According to them, they're working with their Waco office to try and get billing situated by end of September.
There was a red Camry, not to interrupt you, but there was a red Camry and a horse driving around, reading meters.
Which is, and my best guess, the long shot, I'm guessing Awkward Texas, if they don't get the deal they want, they're going to be the next one out the door and it's going to be somebody else in September. Do you agree?
Here's, here's the thing, we can't, we can't answer questions. Citizens' comments are directed towards council on things that concern you as citizens, that's why it's called citizens' comment. And we're not allowed to address those issues. I'm going to tell you as a private citizen, when it comes to your concerns about billing, I'm just like you, I haven't seen a bill since April. Okay? But just like you, I have to have a full-time job, I have to pay my bills. I'm concerned about what may show up on my doorstep in the form of a bill, just like the rest of you. I could speculate on rumors, but that's pure speculation. I've heard they said they won't tier it, but I don't know, I don't have anything in writing and I, I deal with facts, not hearsay. I've, I've heard that they would work with us, but I haven't seen anything in writing, so again, it's, it's speculation. I'm just like you. I, I don't want to get a thousand or $2,000 water bill and them go, you know, you got to pay it tomorrow or we're going to cut your water off. I might get a little upset, just like the rest of you, probably a whole lot more upset because I'm just like you guys, even though I'm the mayor, I pay my bills, I try to pay everything on time. And just like you, if I'm paying my water bill, I should be able to turn the water on and water my yard or, you know, do whatever I want with it, as long as I'm not, if the state said we're completely under drought, I get we need to follow our restrictions. I, I get it. But I am just, like I said, just like you. As the city, we have very limited controls over a private entity, whether it's a nonprofit or a for-profit water company, there's only certain things we can do. There's no magic answer of, well, the city needs to do something. We can't, what we want to do and what we can't do sometimes don't line up, because we still have to follow the rules, just like a citizen does. And, and there are certain things we, we can and cannot do. And I'm just as frustrated as every one of you. You know, there are entities within the state that investigate issues when it comes to public utilities, whether it be water or, or other types of utilities. The process, when they get in trouble, the, the punishment doesn't always fit the crime, I guess is, is the best way to explain it. And is there legislation trying to come about to be, be a little bit more of an attention gainer, a little more serious with utility companies? Yes, there is, but those processes aren't quick. And right now, with things that go on, sometimes the punishment is, it doesn't fit the crime.
Mayor, this is probably, well, nothing says it's probably more appropriate during 8.6 than during citizen comments.
So, you know, we don't have an answer for you, because they're not telling us.
I, I understand, but you've given me an idea, because they're a private company and there should be some kind of applied contract there. And, you know, I, I went to the degree of walking up to, you know, going up there and, and banging on the door and having them stare at me through the window until they finally came out and said, "We just did the billing, we don't do anything anymore for RCH." And so it was like, well, I don't, I don't have any information, I couldn't pay it online, I couldn't pay it there. So anyway, hopefully, there's some type of legal arrangement that can come about to solve those problems as, as they arrive, if they do send us a lump sum bill, because...
Any complaints you have, Public Utility Commissioner, what we refer to as PUC, you have to go file a formal complaint with them, okay? It does carry weight when you go, especially if a lot of people are complaining about the same thing, you're going to force their hands to have to look into it. So, that's all I can really say on that. I, I'm, like I said, we have the same frustrations, we're not getting any answers, lucky all. Alright, next up, Mr. William Blanchett? There you go.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you very much, I appreciate you guys giving me time to talk. I'm 100% disabled vet, just so everybody knows. I've also been diagnosed with prostate cancer and I'm a retired 25-year criminal investigator. Department of Justice, Department of Homeland Security, so yeah, federal government. Yeah, so I've done some narcotics work and then also child crimes, things, things of that nature. So, um, my concern is, is last Thursday, I was, I happened to be in Plano, Texas, and I was furniture shopping with my wife, which is aggravating enough. Yeah, yeah, so, so, so we're there and, you know, the gentleman was nice, kind of like a car salesman and, you know, he's like, alright, that master bedroom said it's going to be $8,900. So I wasn't too happy, to say the least. So, then I get a little alert in my cellphone and someone taps my door. So I answered the door, go, hey, sir, how can I help you? The gentleman goes, I'm from Awkward, Texas, and I'm just here to notify you that I'm putting a restrictor on your meter based on you being a super water user. And I said, interesting. I said, okay, well, how is that? You know, so in a nutshell, I'm sure a lot of you here have probably seen this video and everything that was posted, but, um, in a nutshell, you know, I asked him, you know, what are you basing this off of? Because I'm like you, I go off of facts, right? So, he goes, after, he kind of goes back and forth about how they're in this unofficial contingency five, because I don't know about any of y'all, but I haven't gotten a letter telling me I'm in a contingency five category drought, for one thing. So, so, I told him, well, we'll go based off this unofficial drought that you're telling me about. And he goes, well, we're actually basing this off of a social media post. So then, at that point, I was like, oh, okay, so now you're, you, you guys are threatening me to put a restrictor on the meter of my home, um, because I'm using my right of freedom of speech. And just like all of you know as elected officials or as a public servant, which I've been a public servant as well, you know what, if you don't want to be talked about, don't be in that position. Period. So I've had a lot of people come up to me and say, you know, they're on my side, I've also had those say, oh, have you reached out to David Naylor? I sure have. You know, I didn't just go on Facebook calling him as worthless as a broken window, which I did. That wasn't the first comment I made. The first thing I did is I reached out, e, by email, and I said, hey, what's going on with our billing, can you give me a call, I'm concerned? You know what, I just bought a, a home here and I want to find out what's going on. You know, I hear all of these rumors, I heard you're the one to go to, nothing. I try again. I try again. Nothing. So then I reached out to the city. Mayor Pro Tem, she helped me out and we filed a few complaints with some of those agencies that you, you mentioned. And, and then now we'll kind of circle back to Thursday. So then, then, then we continue to go back and forth. And, you know, I tell them, I said, "All right, you know, since you guys think that I'm wasting all this water and I'm watering so much," I said, "Why don't you go on the left side of my property, he's facing my door, and go look at the little mini Grand Canyons I have all over the place? Look, look along my fence line. My fence is about to fall over and it's only been there since March." You know, and I said, "I am going to continue to water my foundation. I really don't care what you guys say." And that is the truth. And period. You know, I don't care what RCH says, what Aqua says. Frankly, if you guys were in charge, I wouldn't care what you said. You know, I'm just being honest. You know, because I mean, you're not going to repair my home or anybody else's home here. You know, and my, my biggest concern is, is they're not following any protocols. Then they're going to people's houses like Gestapo, trying to silence you from using, you know, your First Amendment right to say how you feel. Because frankly, I'm pissed off. I'm pissed. I think a lot of people here are pissed off. And you know what? I appreciate the last meeting you guys had when you had the little, you know, the, the, the city hall, you know, little city roundtable meeting where you guys did the questions and answers. That's great. That's what they should be doing, you know? And what I want to say is, you know, I'm addressing you guys, but I mean, for all y'all behind me that are listening, we need to get together and do what we got to do. We need to support these folks here who are for McLennan-Chisholm, who are going to do this in our best interest. Because what's happening right now is not in our best interest. Because if they're going to do it to me, they're going to do it to all of you. It doesn't matter who you are. They're going to go to your house because they don't like what you said or what you look like or what race you are, what sex you are, whatever, whatever you are. Maybe that's why they want to shut off your water. I don't know. You know? Yeah, they're just not going to give you service. That's right. All right, well, just, but, but you know what? It's a big concern and, you know, I, I would appreciate everything y'all can do to help us address this. Because, I mean, one more thing, if, Mayor, if you will, let me add. You know, I, I did take a picture of my meter when I moved in because, you know, this isn't my first rodeo and I have bought brand new homes before. So the builder, you know, used about sixty-two hundred gallons from the day they started building my house to the day I closed on it. Now, when it was just red, it was fifteen thousand gallons. So if you add the months that I've lived there that I haven't been billed, I'm using anywhere between one thousand nine hundred and twenty gallons to two thousand gallons of water. Might I add, I have one of the biggest lots in McLennan-Chisholm and there's either four to five people in my home at any given time. So if that's a super user, you all better be pretty worried. Thank you very much.
I was in the Army, I was a Black Army pilot.
Well, very cool, very cool. I flew in helicopters in Brinton. I love flying in helicopters. Child pilots are...
I just wonder if you guys ever got the ones that, you know, we gave you often. If you had to find our stuff when we were dealt with?
But you got to understand something. I grew up in an era, right now, a lot of the stuff that we all get, they're getting some really cool toys today. But in the late seventies and into the eighties and early nineties, everything we got was handed down. We got handed down from other branches of the service. So a lot of stuff was used. And even in my, my very first M-16, it was an M-16 A1. So we had Vietnam-era equipment.
Yeah, it's got U.S. data bottom. Yeah.
Gina Manos, 107, Cheney Place, McLennan-Chisholm. Thank you all again for giving us this opportunity. And I basically just, there's a lot here that may not know some of the particulars. First of all, I'm going to say a public thank you to Adrian, Mayor Pro Tem, Adrian Balcom. The research that a lot of people have done are, are excellent. It pales in comparison to what I know they've been doing since August when RCH came to them to ask them to take over the water. They began doing their due diligence and going through the different processes, going through the different processes they need to, to get what they need. And that's when RCH backed up, especially when it came to getting the records, annual minutes and all that. I did go up and record request the Attorney General's Office after I did not receive any response from David Naylor. I asked for five things. Annual audits for 2022 and 2023 presented in the annual meetings. I asked for all paid invoices for 2022, '23 to the City of Rockwall and to Blackland. I asked for all paid invoices for legal fees for '22 and, and 2023. And all paid invoices for line repairs and tank divers. And number five, IRS filings for '22 and '23. I received a handful of invoices back from the Attorney General's Office for '22, '23. They had nothing for 2022. And then the attorney responded, "We do not have two of these things. We do not have annual audits for 2022 and 2023 presented in the annual meetings." And this is the concerning one. We do not have IRS filings for '22, 2022 and 2023. So with that same, with that same background, they've only continued to do a disservice to us by even bringing this retailer Aqua as an option. When they could have signed the interim agreement or still worked that out, which is still open and RCH could do the right thing and continue on in signing the interim agreement that was initiated so that we could go forward and all get the water that we need, get the infrastructure, the towers, everything that we need. We need to go direct to North Texas Municipal Water District. Number one, Aqua cannot ever be a direct customer with North Texas Municipal Water District. All the other noise and chatter really doesn't even matter. If we aren't direct, which McLennan-Chisholm can, they have the experts all in their respective fields. I don't, I am not even interested in hearing in about any of their third-party deal because we've been through that and done that for 10 years. They didn't do what the diligence that they were supposed to do to go to North Texas. RCH did it 10 years ago. And these people have been doing it on our behoves for everybody, for all RCH users. ETJ, MC, we just need to drop that whole division. It's for everybody, just like RCH was. They have the experts in line. They have Infomark in line that can take over the operations. If Aqua was out of the picture, which I wish they were yesterday, they're ready to take it on. Our block is RCH, who wants to make some money, sell it to a retailer, who even if they could sell it, would have to take the profit there. They can't sell to, they, uh, uh, RCH can't sell to a retailer. If they do, they have to take the profits and give it to a nonprofit. Well, that was never disclosed to us in the last two RCH board meetings, but you guys have been completely transparent. If you, if you need more information, ask them. They are more than open with everything that's needed. They're doing non-stop work to meet the requirements from PUC, TCEQ. Yes, it's a process, a process that should have been 10 years ago. It's, it's turning the Titanic around. It's not going to happen overnight, but they're doing it. And the thing I appreciate about a municipality, who do y'all think we've been getting our water from? Rockwall. They're a municipality. They're held to a stricter standard. They have to go by the letter of the law. They sure will have IRS or whatever filings because if they don't, they're in trouble with the state. We have so many oversights that it's not even funny. So first of all, why were the people who walked away with RCH records? How could they even do that with RCH over them, this H2O people? So going back to the, the very first of it, MC has to report to a hundred percent. I have zero, zero trust in RCH for the last 10 years for hiring Aqua, who's, it's the monumental evidence of violations, complaints, hike rates. They are only care about their shareholders. And who do you think is going to support their shareholders? Us through all the rate hikes. It's history. We already know that. I go with you guys. I applaud you. Keep doing what you're doing. Nobody knows the countless research and hours and all the hoops that you're jumping through with PUC, TCEQ, all the engineers. I applaud you and I'm ready to get started. I just wish RCH'd get out of the way and let y'all do it. But you, you got a plan anyway, so you've got my vote.
Thank you. All right. I apologize. I got to start turning this thing back on. Somebody watching online said, "Hey, would you please turn your mic on because we can't hardly hear you." So, all right, so if I get a little too loud, you're going to know because you'll get the feedback. Are there any other sheets? All right. It is seven ten. Citizens' comments are closed for the evening. We'll move on to the consent agenda, which is items six one through six eleven. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agendas from six one through six eleven, unless there's any reason to pull anything or change anything. Sorry.
I, I got a couple of items that were corrected from six point three, six point four, so I'm going to pull those out.
Or can we just approve them with the corrections?
I have to do it separately.
Okay, okay.
I make a motion to pull six point three, six point four out of the consent agenda item.
Okay. All right. Then I'll entertain a motion to approve with those two removed.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items minus six point three and six point four.
Okay, I've got a motion to have a second.
Second.
All right. If there's no discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous. All right, move on to six point three.
I make a motion for six point three to approve the minutes with the updated grammatical changes, minutes of the August eighth, 2023 city council meeting.
Okay, I've got a motion on that. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. If there's not any discussion, it was just grammatical changes or grammatical errors that need to be changed? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous. Move on to six point four.
I motion for approval of the minutes of August fourteenth, special city council meeting with amended grammatical changes.
Yeah. All right, I've got a motion to approve with grammatical error changes.
I'll second that.
All right, I've got a motion, I've got a second. If there's no discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Show that unanimous. All right. Everything's done on that. We will now move on to seven point one, which is the public hearing to receive public input regarding the proposed fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget. Public hearing is, it is seven twelve. Public hearing is now open. Going once, going twice. All right, well, the public hearing is closed on the budget. We'll move on to...
Point of order, Mayor. I think we can move to eight point four, eight point five on the agenda and then, so that we can do eight point six, like, is that okay?
I, I'm fine with that. Actually, because I know school has just started and eight point five has to do with kids, let's do eight point five first. That way, if, if it involves any, any kids in the explanation, we can get them done and get them home. So we'll move on to eight point five, which is the Kids Marketplace. And, I'm sorry, Jennifer? I forgot who was in charge of that one.
So to encourage entrepreneurial, an entrepreneurial spirit within children, we've seen many posts of children selling lemonade, making crafts. And so we're going to put together a Kids Marketplace. It'll be here up at the city hall and on a Saturday, Saturday morning. And we're going to allow kids to come in and set up their booths, sell their products and learn a little bit about setting up a business, how to set up a business, how to be an entrepreneur, and maybe set them off on the right track for lifelong business ownership.
Everybody, everybody understand that? I think it's a cool idea. I mean, the other day, I, I did the one thing that, that most law enforcement would cringe at. I saw a lemonade stand at the turnaround in Sonoma, party. I went up, passed it, turned around and came back the wrong way up against it so that I could buy lemonade. Because it was good lemonade. And I will tell you, the, the two younger siblings were so excited that, that I stopped and, and got lemonade. So I support the idea because I think it's good to support our kids in doing things like that because a lot of those kids that have had those opportunities have grown on, grown on, grown up to be CEOs and owners of major companies out there. And it all started with somebody giving them that idea.
I'm hoping that we have enough interest and success with the first one, that we make it at least an annual event, maybe even semi-annual.
Yeah, let's, let's get the first one out and see how we, we do with it because we learned from them and then we can decide what we can do better and to improve it. Because I'm with you, I'd like to see it be a continuous thing. I want to put effort into our community and our kids and we want those kids to come back and raise their kids here. So, and I think that's a way to get it done. All right.
Move on to eight point four, which is a phone policy for city council, planning and zoning commission and board of adjustments. Ms. Adrian?
Oh, this is, this is Congress.
I'm sorry, Congress.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The proposed policy statement for electronic devices at the dais would be the following. The city council, planning and zoning commission and the board of adjustments, elected slash appointed bodies shall handle electronic communication devices as follows. The use of electronic communication devices such as cell phones and smartwatches during a city council slash planning and zoning slash board of adjustment meeting may lead to the public's perception that a council member slash commissioner is not paying attention to the subject matter at hand or that a council member slash commissioner is receiving information relative to the subject matter at hand that other council members or commissioners and members of the public are not receiving, either one of which is inimical to good government and transparency. Therefore, a council member slash commissioner, use of electronic communication devices, including cell phones and smartwatches, other than for the purpose of, of accessing agenda materials that are on a council member's commissioner's city-issued private iPad tablet device or laptop computer, is prohibited at the dais during city council, planning commission, board of adjustment meetings in closed sessions. In the event of an urgent family, personal work matter, a city council slash planning and zoning commissioner or board of adjustment member shall notify the mayor slash chair and leave the dais and take the urgent phone call, text and/or email message. The background on this is, is I researched around the country. There's a lot of discussion on this. And so it happens frequently with city councils all around the country. And there's city council members, they're on both sides. They, I mean, there's some that just say, "God, let's just do what's right." And, and if I need to use my, my phone or my laptop or iPad or whatever, just let me do it. And there's others that I guess that it's the smaller few that make it that there's a policy made because they abuse it, I guess. So before you is, is this policy of saying, "Look, don't use your cell phones or iPads unless you're using it for the meeting to, to, if you have something you researched or something about an agenda item that you can tell everybody." But not something where you're asking each other, "How are you going to vote?" Or whatever you want to text back and forth or somebody in the audience back and forth with you. in the audience back and forth with you. So that's the impetus of this policy or this proposed policy. It's for council discussion and/or action if you want, but it's something to hopefully help our city council meetings and planning and zoning commission meetings and board of adjustment meetings where we're pretty, I mean, we're up at a dais, that it can, it can be more professional and more meeting of the Open Meetings Act and keep our city attorney calm and collected over here on the sidelines. Anyway, so with that, Mayor, I turn it back to you and the council to potentially discuss and take potential action.
Well, I'll tell you, I'm in, I'm in favor of it. Guys, it's not taking somebody's rights away. It's not trying to silence everybody. It's for us to show respect to each other, but to show respect to you guys, that we're not up here doing what we see so many teenagers do nowadays. You know, we're your elected officials. We owe you the respect to pay attention to what you're doing. Plus, we don't need somebody influencing one of us by sending us stuff. If somebody needs to talk to us, there are ways to do that, but while we're up here, isn't the time to interrupt us because it's not fair to you that made the effort to be here. So I'm in favor of this policy, and myself included, being in law enforcement, I let my office know, hey, I'm gone and I'm out of pocket from this time to this time. I just happen to have it sitting up when I saw one of our citizens said, hey, turn your mic on, I can't hear you, I'm watching from home. Like, yes, ma'am, because I know her. If I didn't say, yes, ma'am, she, the next time she saw me, and she's on one of our committees, so. But I'm in favor of it because I think it just keeps us on the up and up, that we're not being distracted and we're paying more attention to what's going on. So, Dan, your feelings?
I'll second what you, what you've already said. I don't think I can say it any better. For me, I have received emails, messages while I was on council here, and it's rather disturbing. The other thing is the only individual who would want to contact me on Tuesday night at six thirty would be my wife, and she knows where I am, so it's pretty much down. I don't look at it. So I'm in favor of policy as it's written.
As someone whose cellphone goes off constantly throughout the day for her business, the thought of being able to turn it off for an hour or two is heaven. So yes, I am in favor.
I agree. I just want to make sure that there's no distraction, especially when someone's coming up to the podium, citizens are expecting our attention, and then there should be no distraction between us, and then we should have some sort of eye contact or understanding that we are listening, because you know, if you're looking down, they don't know what we're doing. They may be, oh, you're taking notes, but they don't know that. And I think the other thing, too, it could be a distraction that you're not paying attention what the discussion is, and so it could lead to someone not remembering the subject matter because they weren't paying attention by doing step on the cell phones.
Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the policy.
I make a motion to approve the policy to turn off our phones during the council meetings and board of adjustments and planning and zoning commission meetings.
Hey, I've got a motion. Do I have a second? All right. Now that I've got a motion and a second, if there's not any further discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous. All right. Which one's next? Guys, I apologize, my contacts are doing a little funky with the screen. Are we ready to...
You can decide if you want to do, go to executive session on that one, or we can start talking about the budget.
Let's do the budget real quick. Let's move to eight point one, budget presentation and discussion of fiscal year twenty-four budget. Conrad?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Hopefully, it's not an oxymoron when you said, let's talk about the budget, and then you said, real quick. But I will try to go through it as expeditiously as I can, but at the same time, very important document, one of the top things that a council will do all year long. I mean, because it gives direction to staff of what we're supposed to do on all the things going on. So a budget is basically four things. It's a policy document, and it provides a consistent place the community can go to where they know what information they are viewing is true, comprehensive, and current. It's also a financial plan. It helps connect your data to community initiatives and priorities, and you'll notice that a lot of these are connected directly to our comprehensive plan. It's an operation guide, has a clear clickable table of contents, which it will for the final one, that can instantly take the reader to where they want to go, and a communication device puts its information online and paper, residents can come in and get a copy or look at it and look online. Anyway, so the FY twenty-four budget incorporates various areas of the FY twenty-one comprehensive plan regarding water, sanitary sewer, public safety, staffing longevity, and the police and fire issues. Some of the talking points or the main things, the generalized things that you can pull out of this budget would be to understand that it is a balanced budget that you're receiving, meaning that revenues equals expenditures. So our revenues that we'll receive will meet the expenditures that we're going to spend. And also with that, we've tried real hard to be conservative in the revenue estimation and more liberal in the expenditure. And we've done that, and you'll see when we look at fund balances a little bit, that we've had continued growth in fund balance throughout our general fund as well as some of the other funds. It has a decreased tax rate for multiple years, and this year as well. No utility increases, a creation of a citywide salary plan to provide stability in the staffing for the city, and as we sit right now, completing the full-time fire department, but a discussion on that for staffing and equipment with medic-trained or advanced life system-trained personnel for the fire department. If you have on, I think it's in the back of your budget, you have seventeen talking points, and if you refer to that, that's what I will refer to. It happened to go on the back of the budget, so it's there, but that's what I'm going to talk about. First, on page eighty-six, if you want to follow along, I'll say these numbers, so it's eighty-six, not in the budget, but eighty-six in the footnotes. So if you look there and you can pick up page eighty-six, and I will try to go faster, but eighty-six talks about the tax rate. And this will be a separate vote when you come to it, and actually, when we break it up, we'll break it up into M and O, which is maintenance and operations, and INS, which is interest and sinking fund. In here, there's a lot of, there's a lot of explanation of what funds are. The city has a variety of funds and types of funds. I won't go through that, but that's what it is and will take, will have that included in our, in our budget, in our approval of the tax rate or the adoption of the tax rate at next city council meeting. Currently, for this fiscal year, where our property tax rate is at point one oh seven oh two oh, meaning that for every hundred dollars of property tax that we pay here in the city, ten cents or ten point seven goes to the city. It's proposed for fiscal year twenty-four, which is October one. We go by fiscal year of October one through September thirtieth, so we use FY twenty-four in our fiscal year. It's proposed that that rate is lowered to point zero nine six three eight, or six five eight, per hundred. So we're dropping in there. And then the maintenance operation part of that is point zero seven five, and the INS is point zero one two eight two. And the INS is our debt, and we only have one debt here in the city, and we have remaining of one point five three zero million for this facility that we're in. That's our only debt right at the city. And so that gets pulled out right away per state law. So that's, that's at point zero one two eight two, and the remaining point zero seven five four oh eight will be for general fund type, operation maintenance and operation type funds for the city. So that's what that is. On page sixty-seven, the next page there, you can see right in the middle of the page, and we'll hit this a little bit later, but you'll see right in the middle of the page that the fund balances, the unrestricted fund balances. So meaning that these are monies that are available to use but not spent. So over the years, that has been increasing. You'll see that in the spreadsheet later. It's proposed, or it's anticipated, the general fund will have four point three eight four million, and you can see the rest for the public safety fund. We also have, we've created an ARPA fund, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, which is the COVID money that all cities and states in the United States received. The utilities fund, which is more of a business-type fund or an enterprise fund, and what that is, and that's, that's the sewer fund that we have, basically the only sanitary sewer is in the Sonoma Verde area, and then our debt service fund. So that's what that is. The city, of our pick six cities, of all the cities that are around us, the city has the lowest rate by over three, three times. And even though they have low rates, I mean, the lowest rate around us is point two nine, and we're point seven five here at the city. And then on page ninety-five, you also see as we go through here, there's some interesting and fun reading. It actually is very interesting for those that, not something that you want to go to sleep on, but we have a mayor's message in here telling about what's going on, the budget process and how we do it. So it's, it's very interesting information. And then you also have the actual fiscal finance. The budget, unlike what you receive every month from the city, you receive monthly financials. Those monthly financials that you receive are things that actually happen, so how we're spending the budget money that you appropriate during the year, and you can evaluate that and see how we're doing in the spending of those funds. But the budget is based on historical trends, it's based on the current economy, it's based on a variety of things, what we did last year, I guess that would be historical, and so the budget is, is an educated estimate of where we'd be. So we, and like I said initially, we try to be very, very conservative in our revenues, and then liberal in our expenditures, meaning that I sit there and argue with our city finance director back and forth where he wants to be extremely, because I feel like I'm very conservative, but also I'm entrepreneurial as a city administrator, wanting to do things and get more stuff done. But I think it's a good mix to come down to do that. And if you review all these, if there's questions or comments, please, please let me know. On page ninety-five, you see at the top, the first row on that is the estimated beginning cash reserves, and so you can see what that is on here. So on page one oh two, which is another interesting page, we have a lot of graphs and charts in here, but on page one oh two, you'll see a pie chart that looks like this, and has three entries on the pie chart. It's emulating, it's emulating each individual McLennan-Chisholm property tax owners, where the money goes when they pay their bill for property tax. You'll notice that a high percentage of that, the purple or the light purple in here, goes to the Rockwell ISD, or seventy-five percent of all the money you pay in your property tax, it goes to the ISD. Eighteen percent goes to the county, the Rockwell County, and the city of McLennan-Chisholm gets seven percent. So just a quick number, as the mayor always says, he's going to get the hundred or thousand or ten thousand. I put a ten thousand dollars on there. If your property tax bill is ten thousand dollars, that quickly means that Rockwell ISD would get seventy-five hundred of that. Rockwell County would get eighteen hundred of that, and the city of McLennan-Chisholm would get seven hundred dollars. So when the residents say, you know, I pay, you're, well, you're not, you're paying a lot to other entities, and we're not getting a whole lot from there. But just so you know, where your property tax money goes as you go through there. All right. So let's see, the revenues and expenditures that you saw, let's go to page one oh five, or one oh two. This is just the revenues that we have, and it has prior year, it has FY twenty-two, it has the adopted budget for current year, and then it has our projected actuals for this year. As you know, we go from, again, we go from October one to September thirtieth, and we have actuals through the end of July, and you have those monthly financials for July. We don't have August yet. We're in the middle of August, or we're in August, so we don't have August financials in September. So what we do is we go to prior year's usage of August and September, and we take a percentage, we evaluate those and put those numbers in for the remainder of the year. That's how we get our projected actuals. Is it going to be exact? No, but it'll be very close. And then the proposed budget. So you can go down and see some of those and see that some of them are projecting more money this coming year, like the very first one, you'll see the franchise income. We're projecting more money current year than we are going to get, what we're proposing in the budget for next year. And you think, I mean, the franchise fees are like the gas and electric and cell phones and other things that use public right-of-ways. You'd think if we had fifty new households moving into the city, that dollar amount would go up because we'd get more franchise than prior year. Well, we're trying to be very fiscally conservative, and so we're tight on some of those. Do I think we're going to get more? I think we're going to get over three hundred thousand personally, but we want to create that wiggle room. We don't want to err on the side of spending too much than revenues that we have. So on the next, we'll go to the expenditures on page one ten. Well, let's see. We try, again, I said we try to be liberal. I'm going to show you something at the end of the liberal, or end of the expenditures, that's on page one oh seven. So if you look at page one oh seven at the very bottom, it's the far right column, and if you go down on there, you'll notice that under capital expenditures, if you look at the first line where it's identified, you can see capital expenditures. With those capital expenditures, if you follow it all the way over to the proposed budget, there's three hundred and five thousand. This current fiscal year, the council appropriated three hundred thousand dollars for roads maintenance. We felt so strongly as staff that we maintain a proper amount in that roads maintenance to upgrade the roads, which are, a lot of them are needing a lot of work, that we'd put that much in. However, if you look at, on that three hundred and five, if you go three numbers down, you'll see two eighteen, two hundred and eighteen thousand, and that's a transfer from the unrestricted fund balance. So we are balanced in here, other than... So we are balanced in here, other than that two eighteen that we thought, instead of just saying eighty something thousand for roads, we thought it would be important to go three hundred thousand again and, and keep up that momentum of fixing roads for, for that. Okay, I'm going to be one of these, showing my advanced, or my poor eyes. I had to turn on the flashlights if I can see this better. So anyway, that's what that is. And then you'll see right below that two eighteen, you'll see how much is, is appropriated. You'll see a transfer to the public service fund. And that's how much is going to the fire department every year, or this year. But if you also look along that, it's less than current year that we're, we're sending over to the fire department. So that's what that is. So let's go to, to page one oh nine, which is just a couple pages in. And you'll see that same number in the last column, in the first little area right before the summation line of that one point three million right there, under their revenue section of what's going into the proposed budget. Another thing that I need to mention on here is, is all the, the mayor reviewed all the different requests that, that were given in the budget. And one of the things with the public safety is the mayor had, there was a request for three firefighters in here, three new firefighter positions to bring them up to twelve firefighters, which would be a full department. They're being able to be four on staff at every time, so NFPA requirements of two in and two out, and a lot of different things to, to provide the most, the best service. However, to save some money, the mayor's like, look, let's, let's spread it through the year of, of doing it. Instead of everything at the beginning, let's, at the start in October one, maybe one full time, and then, and then one, one at January or whatever, and then, well, it's all in here, which we can take it out if, if we want to. Anything can be taken out of here. It's a balanced budget right now, but if you look at the different line items, say no, or yes, or however, we can, we'll adjust it and bring it back based on your recommendations as a council to the next city council meeting, so you can, and you'll see it in those numbers. So put a little asterisk if there's one of those. However, every line item pretty much, other than the ones that I'll tell you about, the requested things, are virtually the same as current year that you've already approved. We're not, we, I mean, maybe there's a hundred dollars more because we spent, we anticipate having more in a, in a water line item, shouldn't use water, in a phone line item or something. Or, or whatever, we may have spent a little bit more, and so we, we've added that little bit more just to make it. But nothing's egregious, but I, I welcome you to go and, and look through there, other than the things that, that I'm showing, I'm telling you about. You'll also see at the very bottom of page one ten, you'll see the third row from the bottom, row number, or chart of account number seven hundred, capital expenditures, you'll see fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars. And then at two, two lines down, you'll see the bottom or surplus slash deficit, you'll see a deficit of fifteen thousand nine hundred. Did the fire department wrong. This was one of their, some of their requests that they had, and we just wanted to show. We can easily add that to the one point three that we talked about before. But it's, it, it was to show that this is where the request is coming to, just like I showed you for the roads in the, in the, in the general fund. The next sheet, number one eleven, and, and I would suggest it's the COVID money or the American Recovery Act money. I would suggest, Mayor, that we have that on a separate meeting, even though I feel very strongly that we, we should at least encumber that money, if not spend that in the next year. Federal law requires us to have it, have it encumbered by December of twenty-four and spent by, by December of twenty-six. So do we still have some time? Yes, but can the federal government change and say, all unspent money, send it back? Maybe. So I would just say, since we have it here, it would be great use of spending that money and, and as you think of projects. So, but we can talk about that at a different time, but it's one of the funds in our, in our, in our budget. You also see the utility fund has a little bit of a fund balance, but that's for when lines break or maintenance. So we're prepared with equipment and other things to fix and do that, which right now we have no public works department or utilities department. But we do have, as someone mentioned, a citizen's comment, we have a contract entity that does all of our maintenance and does, does maintenance on a monthly basis, goes and checks the lift stations and the pump stations and, and the lines and everything for us, just like if we have our own. They do that as well as all the, the collection, the billing and collection. And that would be Infomarc that's doing that. And then on page one seventeen, you'll see the, the timeline that's remaining. We, our process and timeline is we've gone throughout the year, subsequent pages, but this is what we have left to do. And state law is very, very specific on how we, how we advertise public hearings and hold public hearings in language, specific language. You noticed in the, in the Rockwell, I forget what the neighbor, newspaper's called that we get here.
Harold banner.
Harold banner. In the last Friday's edition, we had to do exactly like state law required us and all the language of that. So it's very specific and, and for reason. I mean, it's, it's our, our citizens, our residents' money and, and the state's saying, you take care of that money. And you let them know what's going on. And if, as interested as they want to be, they can identify that. Okay, just a couple more, we've hit thirteen to seventeen. On page one twenty-three, just a few pages down. You'll see a fund balance strategy. In two thousand twenty-one, the city council passed an ordinance, a fund balance strategy ordinance. And if you look down toward the bottom of the page, actually, on the next page, you see, you'll start seeing the assigned fund balances for the different funds. But on the next page, on page one twenty-four, you'll see the unassigned unrestricted general fund balance. And the council felt like that a, a positive and, and still very conservative place would be to keep between forty and sixty percent of annual budgeted expenditures in a, in an unrestricted fund balance in case whatever happened, like whatever could happen. We have money, sixty percent of the money to be conservative. What I would propose for this budget is, since we have four point three million dollars in there, is take a million dollars out of, out of that unrestricted general fund balance and start creating, as, as you stated in the comprehensive plan, the plan right above it, the capital projects. Put a, put a million dollars into the police capital projects fund. Put a million dollars into the fire capital projects fund. Put almost eight hundred thousand, I think it is, into the roads maintenance and streets funds. So then what we're doing is we're, we're planning in the future, then we create that plan, say a three to five year, seven year plan, and we can show you where that money's going to be spent and how it's going to be spent, instead of having to go into indebtedness for that. And it's something that, it's, it would be restricted in those funds, but the person restricting it is, the body would be you. So if we needed all that four point three for something else, you could take it out of there. But what the message is you're sending is, look, if you decided to put a, a police capital projects fund, you say, look, we're, we're planning on that. We understand that maybe we're going down that road and we need to have that money into the future. And so let's start putting some money away and restrict it. But again, that would be you restricting it, not like a federal government restricting it or a state government, like a grant or other things for that. That's just a suggestion that will be, I would suggest that, it doesn't go away, but we're starting to develop the capital projects. And like for the fire, as they, as they have fleet replacements and, and other type of things that they need in their ongoing developments and, and operation of, of the fire department, there would be funds that we'd be saving away for that, as well as the roads and, and streets. Then the last one, which is, is a big one. Well, after that, on page one twenty-five is, shows how we've been increasing savings in two thousand, and, well, in FY nineteen, we had one point three million dollars in our, in our unrestricted fund balance. And like I say now, we're projecting four point three in just a few years. Okay, so we're not going to talk about COVID tonight, but let me tell you that the next page, one twenty-seven, are the requests from the departments of different types of requests. Some of them have been taken off, like the air packs that the council has approved in a previous city council meeting. And so it got taken out of, out of this. You won't see it, but it was like sixty-nine thousand four hundred for two, and then you approved three. So that's, that's not on here, but what you did was save money and got a great deal for doing it because it was, the price was going to raise a lot. You'll see that on the left-hand side, you'll see one-time requests and the amount. And then in the middle, ongoing requests, and at the far right, the approved requests. So not all the one-time requests are approved requests, but you can go down and see where, like for the fire, if you see the Vance, Van, Super Vec and the PPE new hires, ten thousand, that's ten thousand plus five thousand, ten thousand five hundred and five thousand four hundred. And so you see that fifteen thousand nine hundred that you saw earlier in the fund. So that's what that's for. A big thing on that, we would request that we go to a, and I'll pull this up next to a salary plan, but also to unfreeze the two positions that were approved last year. And then a half a position for, for the front that would fill in. Currently, we have, we have like one and a half employees at the front. One of our employees, our administrative assistant, works Monday through Thursday from eight to two. And this request is to have somebody come in from two to five and on Fridays. And then sort of on call, based on vacations or six or something like that. So that, and then the three positions in the fire department, which I told you, the, the mayor had some concerns and they're in here, but we can definitely take them out. But I wanted to let you know.
When would you like that information?
Anytime, well, it would be something that, that we would have, we'd, we'd do in the talking points and we'd bring back to you at the next meeting. But we wouldn't, and we'd have it ready to change, but it would be something that the council, you and two of your friends, would do it, instead of just, I mean, somebody could overload and say, take this out or add this, which are all good ideas, but it, it's something that's, that's finally approved by the city council. But let me tell you about the salary plan. It's something that we have not had a salary plan here in the city. I would venture to guess there's very few, if any, cities that don't have salary plans. What it does is, is allows employees to evaluate and see where they can go with, with their position. And so it's not any names on here, it's position titles. And, and as they move through the positions, it's based on performance. So what's evaluated is, are the positions and, and how they go. The fire department, not dissimilar to most fire departments or police departments have a step plan in here. How this was put together in year one is we went and had some data that your previous city administrator did in two thousand twenty-one, when they evaluated positions to create a salary plan in two thousand twenty-one. And I took those numbers from our pick six cities that, that was already done and put them in year one. So you already know that, and they were all higher than what we're paying right now. So what that is, is, is so they're in year one, both in the fire as well as the administration. And then, and that's how we got the year one numbers, based on our pick six of FY twenty-one. Then in the fire department, every step is a three percent step. Cities have three, four, five, I mean, different step plans, percentages. And like I say, those aren't automatic steps, they're based on performance during the year. If the city decided to give a COLA or cost of living adjustment, that would move the range or the steps. But if it stands that, a market adjustment would be based on performance. And in administration, you see that, you'll see that in the red on all of them are the proposed sites for those different positions of where they would be moved to. And both in the fire department's step plan as well as the administrative, you will notice that two of them in the step plan for the administration, or not the step plan, in the range, in the administration play plan ranges are five percent COLAs. Those are my position actually, and I wanted to keep names or people out of it, but also the administration, because the administration assistant was already up with the numbers we used. We were already paying that position, that market rate, so we didn't move it. And, and I've been here a very short time, so I, I just put the, the five percent COLA and not going in there because that would have skewed it crazy. So that's what that is. And I think it, it adds, it helps employees to, to look and say, golly, in three years, I could be up to this, this pay plan. Or, and, and helps them to, to want to stay at the city, instead of training them and getting them great, and then they, they still have to raise a family and they, they go to a neighboring city or somewhere else. We want to keep our great employee family together and, because they, that we do have a great team together. So that's basically what that is, is in creating that plan, the red, like I say on there, is, is where we put them. Lastly, we have on the back is our comprehensive plan. I told you before that I was going to break it into a separate column. We don't have those columns, but I wanted to include it so you know that where we are looking specifically in the comprehensive plan as we go through the budget analysis. So with that, Mayor, I know that wasn't quick. That was a, at least, I mean, for me, it was a very quick overview of, of this. But I would welcome any council member to come in one on one or one on two. We can't have a quorum, but if you have any questions, you can, whatever your best mode of communication, whether it's texting, calling, coming in, emailing, do that. If you have any questions whatsoever on the budget, so we can answer them. And we'd like to have this approved, both the, the tax rate as adopted and the budget, the final budget approved next city council meeting on September twelfth. If that's not doable, we still have another council meeting on the twenty-sixth. So before our, our new fiscal year starts. So thank you, Mayor.
I was going to say that, I think I'll be ready to go to confirm some things before. So we'll meet, well, actually, it goes in another week to confirm, so you can be prepared for September twelfth.
What she said. All right, let's move on before, before we get into eight point two or eight point three. Eight point six is a discussion in action of a letter by the RCH Water Supply Corporation Council of the North Texas Municipal Water District regarding operations agreement between Aqua Texas and RCH. And based on that, I'm going to move us into executive session to discuss that with the city attorney before we come back out. I don't remember our exact statute for that. Five five one point oh seven one. That's pretty close. All right, so it is seven fifty-nine, we're going to move into executive session.
Hey, do I have? Do we have to wait on Michael to start? Okay. Day twenty-four, we're back from executive session. There was no action taken. What that executive session item was about discussion and action of the letter by the RCH Water Supply Corporation Council. Mayor Proten's gonna read you the letter so you understand what that letter was if you haven't seen it or read it, heard about it, or whatever, so that you can understand what transpired. So, here we go.
Yeah, we're trying to, this letter came and we wanted to make sure the council had a moment to read it. And there's no action. I just want to make sure that we want to read it to you and we're gonna put it in the record for you to read on your own later. So, this was August tenth, twenty twenty-three, statements by City McLincham regarding RCH Water Supply Corporation. This was sent to the, from the city attorney, I'm sorry, the council attorney, James D. Bradbury, who is the counsel for RCH Water Supply Corporation, sent to the North Texas Missile Water District. Dear Ms. Covington, the firm represents RCH Water Supply Corporation. We are in receipt of a letter that was sent to you and to other individuals at North Texas Missile Water District by the City McLincham, requesting to become a direct customer with North Texas Missile Water District. RCH currently provides water service to customers inside the city and outside the city pursuant to RCH's CCN number one zero zero eight seven. The city does not have a water CCN from the PUC, although it has publicly indicated it wants to be in the water business. RCH disagrees with the city's representations of fact in its letter, and RCH has asked that we provide a response on its behalf. First, to be clear, RCH is actively operating and providing water service to its customers within its service area. The city's statement that RCH no longer has any administrative employee, officer, or agent to carry out its day-to-day operations and business affairs, including but not limited to repair and maintenance of its system, water meter reading, or water billing, is false. The RCH system is currently being operated by Aqua Texas pursuant to a negotiated agreement. Further, RCH and Aqua are in final negotiations over an asset purchase agreement involving the RCH system. We are certain that you are familiar with Aqua, but it has been in operation for more than a hundred and thirty-five years and now provides water and wastewater services to more than three million people across eight states. In Texas, Aqua provides water services in fifty-three counties statewide. Aqua regularly invests millions of dollars every year nationwide into improving their plants, tanks, distribution systems, and more to ensure delivery of quality water to the homes and businesses it serves. Aqua has proven experience providing reliable delivery of quality water at affordable rates, as well as operating in rural, urban, and suburban communities. The management and staff at Aqua have specifically dedicated resources to the operation of the RCH system in accordance with all regulatory requirements. In contrast, the city does not have any approval from the Public Utility Commission to operate a water utility. The city does not have a certificate of convenience and necessity to provide water service. Most importantly, the city does not have any water system in place to fulfill the promises it makes in its letter to North Texas Missile Water District. The city, over the last several months, has threatened to institute PUC proceedings to take over the RCH system. If filed, RCH and Aqua will vigorously resist any such efforts. Finally, to further demonstrate its commitment to providing reliable and quality water service to its customers, RCH requests to become a direct customer of North Texas Missile Water District. RCH will submit additional information and materials as required by North Texas Missile Water District to facilitate that process. While North Texas Missile Water District can certainly determine how to coordinate its operations and contracting, RCH felt that the record needed to be clarified regarding RCH. We appreciate your time in allowing us the opportunity to address the statements made by the city in its letter. We are available to discuss any of these matters further should you have any questions. Very truly yours, James D. Bradbury.
Folks, the reason that, the reason we went in there to talk to the attorney is that, that letter that was sent, there are inaccuracies. I'm not gonna say they're lies, I'm not gonna say they're blatantly wrong, but there's inaccuracies. We are doing what we were told that we can do by law in the way that we are proceeding. And they are saying that we're doing things incorrectly. That, that same state agency that told us this is how you need to file is the same one that there have had numerous violations as an operating water company. So, obviously, we're trying to do what we're told to do, to follow the letter of the law, so to speak. And these guys are saying that we're doing things wrong. It's the same, the same organization that they just had their attorney send this letter to is the same one that said in the past they have operated outside the correct way. And we, we wanted to talk to our council about that. You guys now know what that letter says. I will tell everybody, do your homework. You know, there's a lot of information in that letter that they wrote about we being RCH and Aqua Texas and Aqua Texas operating in multiple areas throughout the state. That's completely accurate. But if you go out and research those areas that they operate, I can't say without a shadow of a doubt that every one of them is a hundred percent happy with the service that they've been provided. There may be some out there that they, they drew that lucky straw and they've never had problems with them. But I've heard from multiple people that have had them in other locations that it was horrible. They, that person's experience was horrible. I can't say everybody, but that person's experience was horrible. So, make sure you do your homework. Also, understand, it doesn't matter if their attorney files, fires off a letter, our attorney files off a letter, whatever. You and I and everyone else here that is a customer of RCH, we make the determination. Who owns or runs that company? Not them. Yes, sir? I'm sorry, say that again? If they follow the, if they follow the law and what their bylaws and everything else says from what we have been told, you and I are customers. As customers of RCH, that is also what they call the shareholders of the company, members. We make that determination. It has to go to a vote of us. Can the board say they wanna, they wanna go with this, this company or that company? Absolutely. But you and I make the decision to approve that. That is correct. So, there's, there's a process, but you and I have to be afforded the ability to vote on it and make that decision. Sir? I know, I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to be discussing it with the audience. I, I got a little carried away. I, I told you, I'm gonna get in trouble with him tonight because he's trying to keep me on task. All right. So, that, that was that letter, so there's really no action on it tonight, so we're done with that one. I can't ans- Well, can you ask afterwards? I'll do everything I can, I try to give you an honest answer every time. But if you can wait till the end, I'll, I'll be more than happy to answer your question. All right, let's move on to eight point two, discussion and action on a recommendation that McLincham, through the city administrator, informed representatives of Tellus Man LLC of an interest towards, towards reopening negotiations regarding a developers' agreement previously presented to council on March fourteenth. Mr. Tucker?
Uh, yes. So, first of all, I, I provided a handout in the back there and we had a developers' agreement that was provided to us from Tellus Man. Tellus Man is a large land developer that is looking at about a thousand acres worth of development down off the five forty-eight. And they came to us back in, back in February and made a proposition. The handout in the back, they provided about twenty-five of these. It's Article Five, Water and Emergency Services Miscellaneous. This is the part of the developers' agreement that pertains to the, the topic I'm gonna talk about. There, there's a lot for discussion here. When we, this was proposed back in February, in March. We ultimately made a decision, the previous council made a decision, to vote no on this. And at that, at that time, the water situation perhaps wasn't as acute as it is now and other things have changed as well as the, the lack of water that we have. So, in that vein, rather than do this extemporaneously, I'm gonna read a statement that I prepared and so I cover all my points. And I'm gonna try and be cogent and clear on this. So, I'll just read it. Currently, the preeminent issue affecting citizens of the city, the ETJ of McLincham, is that of water and its availability. We all know that. Over the past month, exceedingly elevated temperatures have caused restrictions on water consumption. This has resulted in property loss, increased susceptibility to fire, elevated threats to health and safety, and generally promoted anger and frustration among residents. It begs the question as to how we have arrived at this point. Though the local water providers, a privately owned and operated company, many residents look to the city for answers, and that's why you all are here tonight. On twenty-eighth February twenty twenty-three, the following appeared on the city council meeting agenda. Item seven point two, the first reading of the Tellus Man LLC Development Agreement. So, going back, Tellus Man LLC is a home developer and current owner of approximately a thousand acres, portions of which are located in South Rockwall and North Cosman Counties. Some parts lie within McLincham ETJ, I think it was a hundred acres. Some twenty-eight hundred homes are projected to be built within the boundaries of this municipality. Municipal Utility District, the project anticipates starting construction to begin summer of twenty twenty-four. The project anticipates starting construction to begin twenty, summer of twenty twenty-four. The developer previously showed interest in partnering, partnering with the City of McLincham in negotiating a developers' agreement. Standard concerns regarding street design, construction, right-of-way allowances, home building, inspections, wastewater disposal, fire protection services, et cetera, were presented for discussion. There was a commitment on the part of Tellus Man to assist the city in becoming a water provider and obtaining its own CCN. And then I referred to that Article Five that I handed out. In concert with City of Terrell, another Rockwall County developer, Trilogy, Houghines, the ultimate plan was to make McLincham a long-term recipient of a diverse water infrastructure delivery system worth approximately fourteen million dollars. That was, I, I think somewhat of an accurate figure, but maybe more or less, I'm not, I'm not positive on that. The agreement specified there would be no obligation on the part of McLincham to contribute financially to this effort. The obvious primary beneficiaries of the project would be the two developers, Tellus Man and Trilogy. However, some of the water could conceivably be diverted to McLincham as both a primary and secondary source of water. Minimally, this could have a significant impact during emergency conditions where restrictions in use are being considered. Currently, McLincham's water crisis is factually a result of poor management under current ownership. As one local water operator recently stated, and this was the Aqua representative at the last meeting of RCH, it's important to explore all options when it comes to providing water for their customer. In that regard, I support the pursuit of the city towards an RCH asset transfer. However, simultaneously, there's nothing to preclude McLincham from seeking alternative sources of water. In the case of Tellus Man Trilogy, Houghines, it is given that their developments will benefit from a partnership from McLincham. There's no doubt on that. Negotiations with Tellus Man failed in great part based on the request for a six-hundred-acre McLincham ETJ land transfer to Terrell City. The city council on March fourteenth voted against this transfer and ultimately negotiations died. However, recently, state law has passed in Senate Bill twenty thirty-eight, changing the relationship between- However, recently, state law has passed in Senate Bill twenty thirty-eight changing the relationship between ETJ and our, our city. Simply put, city authority over ETJ has diminished. It has become easier for areas within the ETJ to disassociate from the local governing municipality. Recently, McLynchghuis has petitioned to become a homeworld city. As a result, its ETJ has expanded from a half mile to one mile beyond its current city limits. The notion of trading away several hundred acres of ETJ seems now to have considerably less importance. At this point, considering the above, security, securing an available water supply for current and future residents has now become, I think, our greatest priority. I believe it's incumbent upon the city council to revisit this offer. A new city council has since been seated and I believe it is appropriate that they have the opportunity to decide whether this developers' agreement may benefit the city and its residents. If this agreement is approved, the city does become a water provider, will not solve the immediate water needs of the community, will allow us to perhaps avoid future emergency water shortages in the future. So, with that being read, I just want to emphasize that this proposal is independent of what we're doing in terms of pursuing RCH. And so, I think it should be judged on its own merits. I think that the changes in Senate law twenty thirty-eight kind of minimizes our authorities, has diminished our authority over ETJ. And I think a trade of a certain acreage is, and we can negotiate the amount of a trade at this point. I think we're, we're gonna be able to negotiate from a stronger standpoint. I think that that has become less of a concern than the, the water that we need. And I also want to emphasize that, once we get control over water, that we can deliver to folks in McLynchghuis and then outside that realm into the ETJ, we may have capacity to kind of control, in essence, the, the density of that housing that is going up with those muds that are, they're starting to develop out in the county. And since we issue the permits, we may be able to control some of the, some of that density.
Do we need to make a motion on this one? Because it's written as discussion and action. Okay. Because I have, I have no issue with wanting to re-talk to them. What I want everybody to understand clearly here is, even if we talk to them about water, it does not solve, does not solve the immediate problem. Even if it were an immediate fix, here's the issue, folk. Even if we got that agreement and it was an overnight fix as far as getting water, we're not in charge of RCH. I can't just hand that over to them. They are a private entity, whether they're nonprofit or not. Just because I may be able to negotiate getting water over here doesn't mean I can put it in that line. So, we just need to make sure you guys understand that. I don't want people to have false hope. I want you to have hope, but I don't want you to have false hope. Because we don't own the water company and I can't just go negotiate this and then let the water go to them. You know, there's, there are certain factors that we have to look at and we have to look at it honestly in what's your best interest, you know, for that. So, just so we understand that. I'll entertain a motion to reopen that discussion with Tellus Man.
I'll make a motion to reopen the negotiations with Tellus Man as written.
I'll look in a second. All right, one once, one twice, there's notes. Motion by. Right, now we have to check what we have up here. So, the motion dies. No action on it tonight. That doesn't mean-
Well, you and I have discussed this in the past and I, I, I'm all for this project. Again, going back to the previous sewer project that was performed, I think, two years ago, two and a half years ago, it was woefully underestimated and I know that the engineer continually returned to console to request more money. So, it inflated out from initial, I think, estimate of about two hundred and fifty-two, it came to about five hundred thousand dollars when they, they were finished with the project. I was, I was also disappointed in the fact that it didn't entertain, trying to push that under the five fifty. That's, that's history. That being said, what I would prefer on this is rather than estimate, I, I prefer a, a contract of some sort, something in-
A little more concrete?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, we know upfront what the total cost is gonna be and we know what they're going to be providing as a service.
Um, just to make sure I'm clear. So, it was estimated at two ninety-five, when was that done? The estimation was two hundred and seventy-five thousand from the engineer. When, when was this estimate?
Within the last sixty days.
Oh, okay. All right.
Um, but what council member Tucker has asked is to give a more concrete number on them. I, I have no issue with that. We want to do that, so direction the staff will be to get, with the engineer, to get a, to get a concrete number right back to the council. And what all that entails, that cost. Are we good? All right. We finished all those, so now we're up to updates, discussion and directions down. House is hard to leave, guys. They live in high levels. Schools, school-minute session for roughly a week for some. So, you know, watch out for the kiddos. I know they're, they're not always watching when they're running around. Yeah. That's all I've got.
Um, I'm thinking about hosting a, kind of like a workshop for how to petition your local government, how to do it effectively, so you'll probably see some information about that. And I, I don't know, what, what do you think about council, about some sort of workshop for us to teach people how to?
Hosting a workshop on how to petition.
Yeah. Okay. So, sounds good?
It sounds good to me. Jennifer, you got anything? Dan?
Yes, sir.
Guys, it is, hold on. My contacts are getting-
Eight forty-eight.
Eight forty-eight. This meeting is adjourned.